From August 31st, 2020 to order. Hope, would you like to do the roll call, please?
Mrs. Bruderly, here. Mr. Gold?
Here.
Mrs. Greater X?
Here.
Dr. Kipke? Mr.?
Attention.
Okay. Mr. Lundie?
Here.
Mrs. Reed? Here. Dr. Shoemaker?
Present.
Mr. Naughton?
Present.
Ms. Shehab?
She was unable to attend. She's at practice.
Okay, and in case you didn't hear, Darrell Kipke is unable to make tonight's meeting. So we have had our virtual meeting since mid-April, and so I am not going to review the actual virtual meeting procedures this evening. They are listed in our board packet, and I would just encourage everyone to be mindful of those. And so our first order of business are the meeting minutes. Would someone like to make a motion?
Hi, Jason Gold moved that the Board of Education approved the meeting minutes from August 10th, 2020 as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'm Mara Greater X, support.
Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Vestigard, if you could do a roll vote, please?
Ms. Bruderly? Aye. Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Mrs. Greater X?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Who?
Mr. Lundie?
Here, aye.
Mrs. Reed?
No.
Dr. Shoemaker?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I can't hear Julie.
Aye.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, Trustee Reed, did you say aye or no?
I said no.
No, okay. So the motions are approved by a vote of five to one with Ms. Reed dissenting. Next is the approval of our agenda. And there was a last-minute addition about two hours ago. Hope shared an email with board members, an updated packet. There's a new item that was added as an action item, designation publication of record. And so would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm Mara Greater X, moved that the Board of Education approved the agenda as amended? Because we added that, or is it?
As presented.
Okay. As presented.
Okay.
I, Ms. Bruderly, second.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second. Any discussion regarding the agenda? Okay, Ms. Vestigard, if you'll do a roll vote, please?
Mrs. Bruderly? Aye. Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Mrs. Greater X?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
Dr. Shoemaker?
Aye. So the minutes are the agenda as presented, as unanimously approved. Next, there are no school presentations, so we'll move to the administration and board updates. Dr. Timas, do you have a superintendent update?
Yes, I listed three items that I want to go over. I'm going to do that in a presentation form so that we can go over each item in detail. Let me just get this, there we go. So our plan to start the school year is this phasing model where September 8th, remote learning for all students except for our students with the highest instructional needs, and then full online for other interested families, checking data on the 15th and the 22nd, and weekly after that, phasing into young fives through sixth grade at 25% to 50%, moving them to 100% phasing in the other grade levels, et cetera, and working our way through. What, when we asked parents what they chose, this is the breakdown. Approximately 74% of our parents or our students are in the homeroom model, which is the model that would phase into the classrooms. Approximately 26% of our students are in the home-based classes. Section-wise, and this is the number of classrooms per grade level, the way it breaks down is in young fives, we had three, we had a half-day section already, so that's the half. So we had three and a half sections of homeroom, one section of home-based. Kindergarten, we have seven sections of homeroom, three sections of home-based. First grade at seven and three, second grade at seven and three. The third grade class is a little larger, so it ended up being seven and four. There were 11 sections instead of 10 for that grade level. Then we go back to seven and three, seven and three, seven and three, so really consistent through the elementary grades. At Mill Creek, about 74% of our students chose the homeroom model, and about 26% chose home-based, and the high school is a 79%, 21% breakdown. When we look at how we're going, how we're implementing that model, what we set up was that our anchor, beacon, and Wiley students, whether they're homeroom or home-based, are with one classroom of teachers, similar to as if they were all in the building. So they each have their own teacher, and they're in their own teacher's class. When we did technology pickup today, we had teachers that are teaching in the home-based model, and parents were coming in, that is their teacher. So they were distributed the device for that classroom, they've distributed the materials for that classroom, et cetera. At Creekside, because we run both Summit and Pinnacle there, the Pinnacle teams have both homeroom and home-based options at each grade level. The Summit teams have the same thing, both homeroom and home-based option at each grade level. Mill Creek, in order to kind of work through what happens with the middle school schedule with math choices, language, all the different components that go into once you set up in a middle school and the kids start to get to explore options, the way it's set up is we have a seventh-grade Summit team that has both homeroom and home-based students on the same team. So what happens is it's split in their day, as far as from the teacher perspective. And then eighth grade has, the Summit team has the same thing, both homeroom and home-based. The apex teams are either, they're all homeroom, and then there's about 35 full online students split between seventh and eighth grade. At the high school, we, as we started to look at the way we would phase kids in, if in the one estimate is saying that at the end of October, beginning of November is when we start with 25%, and then move to 50, we started to count up how that looks, and we decided that logistically, we, and we worked with the teachers on this, we could run homeroom and home-based merged in the same classes, once we started looking at the actual kids who chose which, and which classes they fall in. The technology info, approximately 1.5% of our families needed internet support, so they needed, we've, we're distributing mobile hotspots to these families. The difference with these mobile hotspots compared to what we did before is they don't throttle, a lot of them, and a lot of people's individual plans, they throttle down the data at about 10 gigs, so we went with, we were able to work out an unlimited plan. But we paired it specifically with the school device, so they can't go to do anything else but use the school device on it. We did, and this is actually really great, Hope put this together. This is the remote learning support webpage for families. It has all the tech pickup times to, we're going to distribute about $2 million worth of devices this week. We did anchor and beacon today, Wiley and Creekside tomorrow, Mill Creek, and then the high school's the next day, and then the high school again continues on Thursday. So what we set up is that for every parent, if they go to this page, we have all the different forms there are, we have guidelines for students on video conferencing, we have how to connect your device to Wi-Fi, all the different insurance forms, et cetera, quick guides on what to do if you get stuck, the tech hotline, and then when you go down, it's how to log into the different platforms. Building, what happens is, for example, if you are, if your child is in anchor or beacon home-based, these are the teachers, so you just look for your teacher. These are the videos you would need to help support for your child. If you're in anchor or beacon homeroom, which are these teachers, these are the videos you need. If you're in Wiley home-based, and you have any of these teachers, here's the videos you need. If you're in Wiley homeroom, and you have any of these teachers, these are the videos you need. Same thing for Creekside, for Summit, named by teacher, Pinnacle, named by teacher, Mill Creek Summit, all the different, all the different tutorial videos you would need based on exactly what program your child is in. So we wanted to make it so it was as user-friendly as possible for our families. And we've set all that up in one spot. It's a resource hub that should be really instrumental. We had to record our own videos to be able to put on there, and then we had some videos that we could utilize based on the different learning management systems. So the next piece, we're going to have to start, and we have been monitoring the data, but we're going to start the official report on September 15th. So as we look at the data points, this is as of Saturday. So right now, we have 56% of our new COVID cases in Washtenaw County in the past two weeks are individuals under age 30. We have a, the infection rate as of Saturday, I did not get a chance to look at it today, was .99. We're in orange or yellow right now. The daily new cases, you can see the pattern. You can see the infection rate pattern. When we talked to the health department on Friday, they're getting data up, or they're getting test results back. Some tests in 24 hours, some in two weeks, and it, there is, it's still data trickling in. The University of Michigan has been posting their data as far as, this is as of 8/23, and again, they start classes this week. So this was just with the move-in, they had as of 8/23, 11 new weekly cases of students and seven of non-students, and they print their, they show their positivity rate, and they start classes officially this week. When we look at data points from the county for the test in the last two weeks, for 10 to 17-year-olds, it's been 11% of the new cases, and 18 to 22-year-olds have been 25% of the new cases. But we look specifically for 48130, and we do hit multiple zip codes, but specifically in the last two weeks, we have 17 cases in this, in our zip code, so getting some pretty good granular data now. Regional trends, we are in region, in the region with Detroit, et cetera. This is the regional trend, and here's the Washtenaw County trend. So it follows pretty similar. When, we've been looking at nationally, when you look at what the option, what the paths might be, there's, there was originally thought that the COVID paths would be either you peak and then, whoops, you peak and then you drop, and it kind of flattens out. Or we peak and you get the second resurgence, and we peak again. Then there was this other concept that you peak and it kind of keeps going up and down. Not sure which one we're in yet, based on what we've seen with the trends, because it's in the second rise, basically, so we're still waiting to see what it does. Their individual decisions are the key. This is just from one of the research services. They talked about economy and how, what the models might be and what it might look like. And then they looked at some of the, the research on spread in schools. So there was a study in the UK, they tracked 6,000 cases, zero incidents where children transmitting COVID to parents. Then there was another incident in the US where 44% of the students and staff, staff tested positive out of a group, and over half the kids tested positive. So then there's been what happens in terms of what's happening around the country. So you've seen quarantines in Georgia, we had one just in Livingston County, only with the high school. You've seen different things happen in the country. As of August 20th, these were the outbreaks in schools. I did not get a chance to look back and see if they republished after last week yet, but this was as of August 20th, according to Bridge, where we're seeing outbreaks in schools. So again, we have our phase-in model. We're going to watch the data. We have several data points we need to watch, and we'll look at that every week. I'll do this at every board meeting, most likely, and we have on September 15th, when we do the first official data check, which is two weeks out from, or gets us far enough out so that the data should start coming in from the U of M impact. EMU did postpone move-ins for three weeks, so that's going to have a, EMU doesn't have as large a student body as U of M, so that live on campus, so that'll have an impact, but it's going to, we should see pretty close once U of M does. And that data gets time to take shape, whatever's going to happen. So signed into law on August 20th was Public Act 149, which requires the district to do several things. One of those big items is we need to create an extended COVID-19 learning plan, or an ECOLE. And this is in addition to the plan we already created. The plan includes educational goals, instructional delivery, grading, and equitable access. It needs to be posted on the district's transparency page on the website, and must ensure that students with disabilities will be provided with equitable access to instruction and accommodations. And that is what, we're already phasing in students as quickly as we can that are special needs, so we're in good shape there. We must have educational goals that are approved no later than September 15th, and submitted in the ECOLE plan due October 1st. So on today's agenda is to schedule another meeting on September 14th, and we need to work out the goals, and I'll talk about those in a little bit. We need to produce a report concerning the progress made, meeting the educational goals, and share that, the midterm goals no later than February 1st, and the end-of-year goals at the end of the school year. We have to ensure weekly two-way communication with at least 70, 75% of our students, and share this publicly at a board meeting every month, and post it on our website monthly. So historically, we've had to have 75% attendance physically in classes to count the day as a day of school, so this is a modification of that requirement. The first task we need to do is we have to provide a statement indicating why an extended COVID-19 learning plan is necessary to increase pupil, pupil engagement and achievement for the 2020, 2021 school year. Now, just want to note, I'm not trying to be a smart alep about it, but really, we have to do it because the legislation says we had to do it, but that's not the answer. So. Other new requirements is we needed to give benchmarks, benchmark assessments to all students in grades K through eight within the first nine weeks, and again, at the end of the school year. We were already planning on giving these assessments. We're working on how to do this virtually, like NWEA virtually is going to be a little different. We must assure that we're teaching the same scope and sequence that we would have taught in person for 180 days, 1,098 hours, we already planned on doing this. K-5 students have to prioritize for in-person instruction, which does fit our model of trying to move in the elementary students first. The district must reconfirm how instruction will be delivered 30 days after approval of the ECOLE plan, and every 30 days thereafter at a meeting of the board with public participation. So in other words, once the plan's adopted and approved by October 1st, every month, the board needs to have a hearing and public comment to decide what the next steps in the plan are. I'm not sure what happens once students are all in the buildings again, whether, what happens there, it was kind of unclear, still good in clarification there. Districts must work in consultation with local health departments to develop guidelines that are based on key metrics, and these are the same metrics the state uses to determine the regions and what phases were in by region. None of it's localized, but it's high, high-level data. So the next steps, we need to set a board meeting for September 14th, and we'll have to work on the educational goals, setting that meeting's on tonight's agenda. We received the template on the 27th, so we didn't even, the reason we haven't written the goals yet is because as of Friday, I didn't know what the goals had, what they had to include. So now we know, we have the clarification of what that has to look like. The first task, we have to come up with that statement on why ECOLE is necessary, and then the goals, we need to create educational goals that specify what needs to be achieved by the middle of the year, by the end of the year. It has to involve subgroups, et cetera. And I put a lot of verbiage on here, but to give you a chance to read that, this is what our goals have to include. So we're going to work on the goals. And we have to write the goals in a way that we could actually measure it. That's the other thing we have to figure out, and turn it into some number that's reportable, because they're going to take all of the district data and roll that up into a statewide report somehow. The last piece is, we have a school board candidate forum. I need to send the formally invitation. I see most of the candidates are on today's meeting. The Dexter Forum, which is Dr. Hanson and Carl Fink, have agreed to moderate the forum. It'll be Tuesday, September 22nd at 6:30 PM. They wanted it via Zoom, so we'll do it via Zoom. We'll do the Zoom link, it'll be shared this week. It's, we had to, we've been having to use our license, our Zoom license a little different. So what we're doing is we take the webinar license and we move it around. So as of right now, the webinar license is at Mill Creek. So once I get the license back, or Hope does, we'll set up the Zoom link for the forum. So I just have to wait till buildings finish up some meetings. So that's the, that's the overview. That's the update.
Great, thank you. That's a lot. Lot is going on. It's a busy time of year, so thank you very much for your efforts and the efforts of all the staff. Sure, go ahead, Trustee Reed.
Thank you. This is Barbara Reed. First, I just want to say I appreciate having that hub where parents can go. I think that's going to be terrific, and I look forward to exploring it. My question is, I, I've been hearing that there are some families who have been at either beacon or anchor and have switched to the other one, and I think if you would give us a little explanation, people would be interested in here. I'm sure it has to do with the homeroom, home-based, but can you share a little bit about that?
Yeah, that's exactly what it has to do with. So we'd had some grade levels where we had six kids in that grade that wanted homeroom, or sorry, home-based, and then we had 10 or 12 in the other building, or 15. So we had to move them so we could staff it and be able to get the kids balanced out.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, this is Mara.
Someone else? Okay, go ahead, Trustee Greater X.
I just wanted to know if the slide, slide presentation that you went through, if that would be available?
Yeah, I'll send it out. I'll put it available with the agenda and everything. I had to, I had to change the setting before I share it, and I changed something in a meeting that went from four to five tonight, to make sure things were accurate, and then I just have to make sure I get the setting right, so it's not editable.
Good idea.
Yeah. We've made that mistake before. It ends up saying all kinds of things.
Did anyone else have a question for Dr. Timas? Okay, we'll move along then. I do not have anything for the board president update, and next would be the student representative update, and I'm looking on my screen. Aiden, there you are, Aiden. Aiden, do you have an update for us?
Not much has happened that I know of.
Okay, okay, thank you. So now we come to our first opportunity for public participation. This is the first of two opportunities. Individuals who wish to speak can speak for five minutes apiece, up to a total of 30 minutes. If there are more individuals who wish to speak, we will divide the time accordingly. And anyone interested in making a public comment at this point could raise their hand virtually in the participants' window, and then we will unmute you. I am not able to.
I don't see any hands up, Julie.
Okay, great. I'll just give everyone another minute if anyone would like to speak. If you could raise your virtual hand. Okay, I do not see any. So we will move on to our consent agenda. There are three items in the consent agenda, resignations. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'm Mara Greater X, moved that the Board of Education approved the consent items in bulk.
Thank you. Is there support?
I, Ms. Bruderly, second.
Okay, thank you. Because there are, we have a motion and a second, it's consent, so there is no discussion. Ms. Vestigard, can you do a roll vote, please?
Mrs. Bruderly? Aye. Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Mrs. Greater X?
Aye.
Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
Dr. Shoemaker?
Aye. So our consent agenda has been approved unanimously in bulk. Next, we have three action items. The first action item is to schedule an additional board meeting. As Dr. Timas mentioned, the COVID-19 Preparedness and Response Plan that was submitted. Each school must now submit an extended COVID-19 learning plan, and we need to do that by September 15th. And so it's proposed that we add a board meeting on September 14th, so the board can review that plan.
Well, it won't be that plan. We need to set our goal first, our goals. So I'll have goals, proposed goals, I'll try to get them done as soon as we can, now that I know the template for it. That'll just be the goal part.
We're only approving the goals at the 14th?
Hopefully, yes.
Okay.
If not, it'd be a special meeting on the 15th.
Hopefully not. Hopefully, we just do the one special meeting on the 14th. So would someone like to make a motion to add that special meeting on the 14th?
I, Ms. Bruderly, moved that the Board of Eds schedule a special meeting on September 14th at 7:00 PM for the purpose of meeting the extended COVID-19 learning plan requirements.
I'm Mara Greater X, second.
Great, so there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Ms. Vestigard, if you could do a roll vote, please?
Mrs. Bruderly? Aye. Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Mrs. Greater X?
Aye.
Doc, Mr. Lundie?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
Dr. Shoemaker?
Aye. So the motion to add a additional board meeting on September 14th has been unanimously approved. Next, we need to schedule a meeting for a FOIA denial appeal. So the district denied a FOIA request, and the district has now received a FOIA denial appeal to the Board of Education, which was dated on August 21st. And we need to set a date and a time for the hearing within 10 business days. And so, and that's 10 business days from the 21st, is that correct?
No, it's today.
From today.
From today.
It's officially by the board today. This is the first time the board has convened since that was submitted. So this is a receipt, and then 10 days from today.
So is it, would that include the 14th then, if we're talking business days?
Yeah, we could do it on the 14th.
So we could do it on the same, in the same meeting that we've just added?
Yes.
Okay. That would seem to make sense to me.
I have a question, Nick Lundie. Is there an expulsion hearing at 4 o'clock that afternoon also?
Most likely, yes.
Is it, but does it make sense to do it in conjunction with that, or does it need to be at a board meeting?
We should probably do something separate, just to respect the student.
Okay.
We have it on the agenda for the 7:00 PM board meeting on the 14th, and then if we need to go into a closed session for the appeal, we could do so?
Yes.
Okay. If someone would like to make a motion, that would be great, and then we can continue discussion if need be.
So I, Ms. Bruderly, moved that the Board of Eds schedule a FOIA appeal hearing on Monday, September 14th at 7:00 PM as part of the newly scheduled meeting.
Thank you. So second?
I'll support it, but do you really want, Nick Lundie, do you want to say it 7:00 PM, or do you just want to say at that meeting?
At that meeting.
And can I clarify? So will that be in part of the open meeting, or will there be a closed session for that?
It's, everything has to start in an open meeting. So we'll have to work through, though. I'm still working through the legal process. I'll be honest, I've been doing this 12 years, I've never had a FOIA appeal to a board. I've seen it go to courts, never to the board, so.
Ms. Bruderly?
If needed, we would move to a If needed, we would move to a closed session.
Are we in the discussion portion yet?
Yeah. So we have, we have a motion and we have a second. And Ms. Vestigard, can you repeat back the motion?
Well, that's what I wanted to clarify, because I, I feel like Elise said 7:00 PM, but then she took that back. But I wanted to clarify that was her intent.
Yeah, as, as part of the meeting.
Yeah, okay, as part of the meeting. And then Dick was okay with seconding that, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, so now we're ready for discussion.
Okay. And now we'll open it up for discussion, Ms. Reed.
Yes, my, my question is, we received a fairly complex letter as board members, part of the appeal. And when we go to the meeting to discuss whether we're going to, you know, approve or deny, will we be given legal counsel from our, from our attorney perhaps in writing that will help us to know what the proper response is? And there was a lot going on in that letter.
Yeah, there was. That's part of the problem with the, the FOIA is there's several items in there that really are about specific students that we, I'll have, we'll have all the information we need to know how to proceed legally without violating any rights of anyone.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else like to make a comment or question? Okay, Ms. Vestigard, can you do a roll vote, please?
Mrs. Bruterly, aye. Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Mrs. Greater X?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
Dr. Shoemaker?
Aye. So we have scheduled the FOIA appeal for Monday, September 14th. And there's unanimous support. Next, our action items is to designate the publication of record. At our business meeting in July, we designated the Sun Times News as our publication of record. And then the Sun Times News has suspended their physical print publication as of July 15th. Therefore, we need to select another entity. And it is proposed that we use the Ann Arbor News M-Live as our, as our designated publication of record. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'm Mara Greater X, move that the Ann Arbor News M-Live and the Dexter Community School District Newsletter be designated as the legal publications of record.
There's support for that?
I, Elise Bruterly, support.
Any discussion?
I just have a question, Dick Lundey. Is our publication record, does that need to be a print? Or can that be online? I, I think the Ann Arbor News meets both, but I'm just curious.
That was my question, one of them.
Yeah, that's, and it's one of the challenges. We've seen other municipalities and school districts have chosen the Ann Arbor News because we're running out of print papers to utilize.
Are we required to use a print paper then?
If it's available.
Okay. That makes sense.
Trustee Reed?
Yes, I, that was, Dick covered one of my questions. And my other one is, I noticed that we put the deck, like an internal sort of paper as the other one that we're using. Is that in print? Or do we just, would we stick with the Ann Arbor News and then also include it in that? Because it's our paper and we want to, or I don't know, I just didn't know. I, I thought it was electronic, are we getting that in print now?
Electronic news. The Dexter Schools Newsletter is electronic, it's covered.
Yeah, so do we need to include that? Or if the, if the point is to have a printed paper? I'm just wondering. It, I think it helps if people know there's one source and they're going to go to that.
I think the point is, from the, from the legal standpoint, is to contact as many people as possible. Not everybody gets the hard copy paper, but there are people who've never read the website who do get hard copy papers, so that covers both.
Okay, great, thanks.
And M-Live is also electronic too, so that, and that was covered as well in the motion.
Yeah, really, it's a shame we're running out of options for print delivery. It's, that's a shame.
It is, and I suspect at some point, we may not have any print papers whatsoever. And online will be the only option. So any other discussion? And Ms. Vestigard, can you do a roll vote, please?
Ms. Bruterly, aye. Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Mrs. Greater X?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
Dr. Shoemaker?
Aye. So the Ann Arbor News M-Live and the Dexter Community School District Newsletter have both been designated as the legal publications of record with unanimous support. We have no items for discussion this evening. No committee updates. And we are at the second opportunity for public participation. If anyone wishes to speak for up to three minutes, we've designated 15 minutes in total. So if more than five individuals wish to speak, we'll divide the time accordingly. And if anyone would like to speak at this point, if you can virtually raise your hand.
There are no raised hands.
Okay. I don't see any as well. Okay, there is no one who wishes to speak, so now we'll move to board comments. Does anyone wish to make a comment? Trustee Greater X.
So I just want to send my congratulations to the Girls Cough Country team who beat Pinkney at their first meet on Friday. It was a, went to a tiebreaker. And so it was 29-29. And so then they look at the sixth runner that comes in from each team. And we won by a nose, by point two. And the, I'm especially proud because I've known the girl who has, who won, who's a sixth person, like, she's not my own daughter, but if, if I could have another one, she would be one of them. I've known her for so long. And the guys were defeated by Pinkney, but we'll get them again. And tennis matches went last week as well. And my son's not as great at reporting this to me, but I do believe that we did not win against Canton and Plymouth. So that's all the news that I have. Oh, also, if you're a DHS parent, buy your yearbook today. It's the last day for the $50 discount.
Is that for this coming year or last year?
For this coming year.
Okay, 2021.
2021. And so it goes up to $55 next, tomorrow. That's what I was doing right before this meeting started. I was like, oh, I missed the last deadline. So just putting it out there, because I, I know a lot of people were sad last, or in May, when they didn't have it. So there's plenty of time, but it sneaks up on you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Trustee Reed?
I just wanted to say that, you know, as we get closer to starting the school year and we get more information, excuse me, and the details are coming together, I'm hearing just an increased optimism among parents and a willingness to, you know, to roll with it a little bit. Be supportive, be positive. And I feel like we're going to make the best of a really tough situation. And I appreciate so much the work that has gone into getting those details to us, getting the additional information, putting the class list together, and just really helping everyone to feel like it's going to be okay, right? And so I just want to thank everyone for that.
Anyone else?
Um, I do have something to say. Okay, so usually at a Dexter website, I don't know if this has been addressed yet, but there is a semester calendar, like the start of semester one and the end. Has that been mapped out? Like, will semester one continue, one in November, once we go back, potentially?
Yeah, so semester one goes through January. It's January 21st, yeah, same calendar.
Okay, I just wasn't sure.
Yep, including the first day of school's a half day. All that is being sent out, yep.
Anyway, trustee Gold?
Yes, Dr. Timis. During our last meeting, I suggested that the district consider hosting a health meeting for students, families and the staff and the community with local health experts who are providing expertise and consultation regarding COVID-19. A neighboring district held a meeting last, a health meeting last week for their community and was greatly appreciated and well-received. Are there efforts for DCS to host a health meeting for our community?
Yeah, I've asked for availability and they were doing that one first, so I'm still waiting to find out.
Okay, great. And then the second question with regard to the resolution to adopt anti-racist principles and practices and to be a culturally responsive school district and the DEA's Black Lives Matter statement on education justice and the DCS alumni initiated by Emily Olberg to implement racial justice education at DCS. How are these efforts being realized in the virtual learning experience and within the staff professional development? And can you provide us with the efforts that will be actualized during the school year?
Yeah, we don't have the formal plan. We, you know, all we keep doing is writing plans, it seems like lately, but that, we're not getting that work done. I've had two consultants now fall through on that to be able to work at the board level and community level. I'm still working on that piece. The staff did participate in a county-wide training last Monday. Our entire district, teaching staff and administrative staff. We have, we've been talking with the DEA on doing some work with our social justice leaders and doing the work with the EJET and starting to branch out that way. We have to formalize things. We had to formalize things.
Okay, great.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no other board comments. There are two information items in our packet. One is the bond construction report from July. And the other is notice regarding the MASB delegate assembly. So it's a little bit different this year. And so you can review that document as well. We have no closed session this evening. And so we have a short board meeting tonight, so enjoy it, doesn't happen often. So I know it's a busy time. And so with that, I will adjourn tonight's board meeting. Thank you all, good night.
Night.
Thank you.